Okay, it's seven o'clock. I'd like to call to order the July 8th, 2025 Town Council meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Neil, would you lead us, please? Thank you. All right. We have no presentations today? No public comment, any new items? So we'll move to F, Public Comment. Anybody inside would like to make a public comment? Please come up to the podium. You have five minutes. State your name and your address.
Good evening, everyone. Robert Parker, 22 Tanglewood Road. Just to backtrack just for a second. When the first high school was proposed and I was attending the meetings, I made it very clear about my concern with the intersections of Crestwood and Knollwood and the pedestrian access that was going to become more major seeing that the high school was going to be closer to our neighborhood than we would have liked. Even with the second high school, I still attended all the meetings, made my same concerns known to everybody. I was told at the time, it's a long ways away. We'll cross that bridge when we get to it. And "bridge" being kind of a pun at this time, but that's another issue. We won't discuss that. And I made it known in attending all the meetings that even when the high school opened last August, September, there was a large number of students parking in our neighborhood. And I was concerned with the pedestrian traffic as emergency vehicles and even larger delivery vehicles couldn't get through the intersection because cars were both parked on both sides of the road and I was very concerned that pedestrians would get hit. Thank God that has not happened to the state, but I am still very concerned that it will. I've addressed this with the town. The town tells me it's a Board of Ed problem. Board of Ed tells me it's a town problem. Police Department, there's only so much they can do. They can police some of the parking and there obviously was some announcements made at the school because now they don't park on both sides of the street, they only park on one. Most of the neighbors are very upset about it, but they also know that, and I've told them, there's nothing you could do. It's public parking. As long as they're parked illegally, not in front of a driveway, hydrant, mailbox, they can park there. They're not happy about it. I've approached many times to have something done there, whether it be a large crosswalk, one of those block crosswalk intersections. You know, I don't want to have a bunch of signs up there. That's not what we're all about. But the Highlands has been through a lot in the last few years with the construction of the high school, everybody complaining about the dirt, the noise, the traffic, you name it. And with the school being built where it was, it's basically right on top of a lot of people's houses, a lot of people still are very upset about that. I've asked the guys to do something, nothing gets done. I had two letters from the town. We did everything that I just told you. It went in front of the Traffic Review Board and they said there's nothing they can do that crosswalks are not an option. I just don't understand why. Even last summer, we had the whole Knollwood torn up for water line replacement. We were told that the road was going to get repaved because normally when they do water line, they repave the entire road. We were told that they were going to wait till next year because the town had some sewer work to be done on Knollwood Road. That sewer work has never happened. There's no construction there. So again, the Highlands neighborhood gets put on the back burner. So I'm just speaking, I think I'm speaking on behalf of many people in the Highlands. Please just do something. Put an intersection down or crosswalk or block painting, just so people know that it's a pedestrian area. Because when those kids come out of school, you know, it's going to happen and I'm just trying to be preventative and just to give the Highlands neighborhood just a little bit of peace of mind. That's all I'm asking. My other last point I want to make has nothing to do with anything else, but, and I've said this before, when we have our bulk pickups twice a year, which I know the town residents love, I particularly don't, but every year it seems to be the week after Columbus Day and this year was the week right after Easter. So the weekend before Easter, on Saturday, Sunday, I had 300-plus vehicles driving up my town looking at my trash. Can we please not do it on a holiday weekend when there's kids running around the neighborhood? It's, again, it's just another accident that's just waiting to happen. Just a little food for thought. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else inside here would like to make public comment? Going once, twice? Anybody online?
I do not see any hands raised.
We'll give it one more second. Still, nothing. Okay, we will move along to G, please.
Make a motion to approve the June 9th, 2025 Regular Town Council Meeting.
Second.
Motion second. Any corrections, additions, subtractions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. No communications or appeals? We will go to report of the committees. 1920 Building Committee. I don't know if you guys looked when you are pulling up on Monteith Drive, but you can see all the staging around the cupola. They have started that project. I believe it's going to take a couple of weeks. They're doing some flashing, repairing some of the wood framing to restore it to its natural beauty. They still are moving forward with all the patchwork on the floors. They're taping, they are doing drywall, they are doing everything they can, patching up the holes. I think they did the supports now in one of the side rooms, correct? The old band? Rubers now have all the supports put in. So they are making great progress and looking forward to them being completed on time. And we'll move over to the Fire Department Station Committee. Go ahead, you want to?
I'll start. Our last meeting was June 17th and the committee reviewed the Silver Petrocellian Associates' updated facility study and updated the additional pricing. The committee asked Chris Nardi to walk us through the study to identify items that would not result in duplication of work if the original renovation work is completed and additional space needs are needed at a later date. So we went through all that. We had a meeting again this morning and we're almost, I'd say we're almost there. We asked them for one more update for one of the firehouses and I think once we get that, we'll be pretty much ready to wrap it up.
Yeah. I think the key here is like what Amy said, is that in our last meeting, you know, there's been some, there's like a base project for these Farmington Fire, Tunxus Homes, East Farms, which doesn't do everything that the chiefs really need programmatically done. So what we've done is taken the time to cost out what those additional options are. And then we had kind of a, at this meeting, we kind of looked at the base package with these additional options and were there savings and redundancies that we could eliminate? And I think we've achieved that. And then today, like Amy said, we have now gotten to the last stage of really asking the chiefs what they can really live with and live without. And we're going to take one more pass at this and I think we're pretty close.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
We want the charge to be as accurate as possible for the building.
That's great. Thank you. Sidewalk Committee.
Sidewalk Committee. We just met a couple hours ago or an hour ago. So we received an update from our intern, Thomas Clark, who has been diligently going around inspecting sidewalks around town, grading them so we can get an idea of what the status of each of our sidewalks are. Are they in disrepair? We looked at our current municipal policy and presentation for what we'd like to see going forward. And we also reviewed the process for residents in the future to potentially apply for sidewalks in their neighborhood, discussed mailers down the road. And our next meeting will be July 26th. So we've made a lot of progress. The biggest part of the sidewalk committee has been untying the knot about what do we think people want? How do we best present it? How do people access the information and then continue along the process if they would like a sidewalk? Do we change something? We want to be as clear as possible so that when we inform the public, we're answering more questions than we're creating. Is that right, Brian?
Fair enough, yeah. And we're being, I think, more than transparent as we interact with the people in the public who want to share their views and we're giving back the information that they need.
Yeah.
And Keith, the meeting is August 26th.
That's July?
Yeah.
August 26th.
Thank you. High School Building Committee, Sarah's not here. Kat, can you add anything to it?
Yep. So Central Office received the TCO. They are moved in. It looks really great up there. Really, the only remaining thing is the bleachers, which is being completed this summer before school opens again. And then over the next couple of months, you know, finishing up the punch list for both the high school and Central Office and then probably looking to close the project out on our end. So getting towards the finish line.
Long time coming. All right. That'll close out. All right. So go to J, Chair Report. Couple of fundraisers to discuss, forward to informing you about Hope Partners of Farmington, formerly the Services of the Elderly. They'll have a dine to donate fundraising event at American Flatbread Tuesday, July 15th, from 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. It'll be on Albany Turnpike in Canton. They will receive $3.50 for each flatbread pizza order and $1.75 for each small flatbread order. Dan, is that dine-in or can they people take out? Both dine-in or take-out? That's awesome. So please come out and support. And secondly, Hope Partners is doing their annual Drive for Hope Charity Golf Dinner fundraiser, Tuesday, August 12th, Tunxus Golf Club, 87 Town Farm Road. It's $1.65 per person, or if you just want to come and dine, it's $60. You can go to a Hope Partners website for more information and you can donate online or sign up to go golfing there. Obviously, this week is the big Tunxus Homes Fire Department Carnival, Thursday, Friday, Saturday. Thursday is Family Night and also we'll be having our community concert over at Union School. The Tribulations will be playing there, so come on down. You can listen to music, have some food, let the kids play on the rides. Friday will be the fireworks and Saturday is the parade. So come on down, support the fire department and enjoy a good time. We'll move on to the Board of Ed.
Board of Ed is on hiatus until school starts in September. There are committees meeting throughout the summer. Nothing else to report.
Thank you. Inland Wetlands.
Inland Wetlands met June 16th and July 2nd. Similar to my last report, it's a lot of standard applications, parking lot changes, residential garage. There was an Eagle Scout project that was approved for putting in a new bog bridge on the Cary pasture. And the Farmington Cemetery is seeking approval for drainage and repair of their roadways.
Excellent. Thank you. In DC?
The Economic Development Committee met last, the last meeting was May 14th. Our next meeting is September 14th. There isn't much to report, but there is a list of events listed on Explore Farmington. So if you're interested in any of those.
Thank you. TPZ.
TPZ met on June 23rd and it met last night, June 7th. One of the big things, obviously, on the June 23rd agenda was the enclave at Farmington River, which is a, which is a very ambitious development, right behind Anthology at the midpoint development location district. And they had an informal hearing, so they came in and kind of presented their plans as far as what they want to do there. And there's a, there's a townhouse component, there's apartment block component, and then there's single-family residents as well. So the commission, it was more a listening night where the commission, they did ask a few questions, but it was really the developers, Waterside 10 Plant, 17 LLC and Crown Properties, taking the opportunity to bring people up to speed on what their, what their proposal is. Obviously, there's a number of things. This is going to be a long-term process and it's still to be determined how this will play out, you know, because it is an ambitious project. It needs some text amendment changes from what the original district was kind of scheduled for, senior housing. And so the commission's really diving into the details and kind of really listening and listening to, you know, there was a number of, number of the public at this meeting, you know, because they're concerned about traffic, they're concerned about maybe that the development is too big and too impactful for that, for that position right there in the corridor of Loop 4. So that's to be, that's to be an ongoing thing and they'll be back at a meeting coming up in a couple of weeks to further that discussion. The other item was Article 2, Section 1A, which is commercial vehicle storage, which is, which is in the zoning regs, there's a, there's a whole framework on what you can park at your residence. And commercial vehicles are regulated, how many, how big, so forth and so on and so forth. So, but there's a lot of things that have developed over the course of, you know, the recent years that really aren't addressed, you know? People have food trucks, people have large equipment that they, you know, are trailering and putting in, in these residential parking areas and they really don't conform to the regs. And I think staff, as well as the commission, are trying to kind of really dive into Article 2, Section 1A, commercial vehicle parking and come up with what are the current impacts? What is, what can, what can be put forward and tightened up and then enforced? And I think, I think the enforcement piece is what they're trying to make sure they're in line with how they, how they set up the rest of the framework. So those are really the two big issues for the last two meetings.
They're big issues to begin with, so.
Right.
Thank you very much. Kay, report of the Town Manager.
You have the written report in front of you. Just, I wanted to let the council know that the Town of Farmington was awarded a $16,500 grant from the Farmington Community Chest to support the purchase of AED cabinets for Westwoods Recreation Complex and the Farmington High School Concessions Area. And that was Jesse, our new rec director, who applied for both of those grants. So we're pleased about that. The other item was that I did attach, I think, the Senior Center Positive Feedback email. I typically do not do that, but I thought it was a really nice email about a mother, that a daughter who was looking for a place for her mother in a different town where she was going to move her closer to her daughter. And she went into the Senior Center and had such a great experience in the Senior Center that she really felt like Farmington would be a place for her to live. And I thought that was cool, so I just thought you might be interested in that. And I just wanted to quickly address maybe Mr. Parker, a couple of things about that crosswalk. The town and the school have been struggling quite a bit about the Highlands area and the parking issue. As Mr. Parker described, it is public roads and, you know, if you start posting no parking, that means people can't park and residents don't want that. They want to be able to park their friends and family, but they don't necessarily want the kids. We've talked about the crosswalk a couple of different times and I think we could probably readdress it. The problem, what we've talked about is, is that when you put the crosswalk there, it's implied that you're encouraging kind of people to park up there. And is that what we really wanted? We were trying to get the kids not to park up there. So again, valid point about it, you know, if they're going to do it anyway and if we maybe would reevaluate putting a crosswalk in. But we have tried to work with the schools to try to have the schools have the kids park down at the parking lots. Some of it is about you have to pay to park and they'd rather pay up, go in the Highlands. You know, you can't just post it. Then we talked about posting the area during school hours that you can't park. We've talked about, you know, surveying the neighbors to see what the appetite was of the individual streets. Did they want no parking signs? So, you know, we've been really trying, it's a tough issue, but we are trying to address it. And I will say, Mr. Parker, we'll look at the crosswalks again. Again, like I said, it's not that we don't want to do it, meaning that, you know, crosswalks are good, safe, but we were really trying not to have the kids be up there and having the crosswalk. So, you know, if they're going to be there, maybe we should think about having a crosswalk. So anyway, I just wanted to say that we have been talking about it quite a bit for almost the whole year and.
Not this time.
And then just a lot of enforcement, the police, you know, we've been blitzing up there. You know, we had a 30-day thing where the police were up there every day, going up, ticketing people. And you can ticket people if they're parking in front of a driveway or in the wrong spot. So, but, you know, it's just, you can't do that for a whole course of the year. And now I think most of the people that are parking there are parking legally. It's just that a lot of people don't want the kids parking on the street. So anyway, I just wanted to comment on that.
Could I make a quick comment while we're on that?
Sure.
Just, I mean, I think that's great, the information that you, you know, brought forward from Mr. Parker's original comments. I think, I think obviously if, if one group says it's not theirs, like the Board of Ed and then the town says it's not theirs, I mean, there is a level of frustration that anybody would have, right?
We haven't said it's not ours.
I understand, I understand. So I'm not, what I'm saying is, if, if in your discussion, we're actively engaged to try to come up with a solution, I would hope that we could reach out to the people on the street and make them part of, part of the discussion.
And that's what we've been talking about, like I said, doing a survey to find out if they want, what's their interest in all these different things. And, you know, again, what is the level of frustration? And some people, they don't, they don't mind. They don't mind that a car is parked in front of there. And we've, you know, I think when it first started, there was quite a bit of cars up there and we're narrowing it down. But it's not, we have not, I mean, I can understand Mr. Parker's perception, but we've had numerous, numerous meetings with the Board of Ed and us trying to find out the solution. It's just that there's no easy solution. And so, you know, that's one of the things that, you know, if you have a crosswalk, is Mr. Parker's neighborhood fine with having all the cars, if kids parking there? And then saying if, say they're not, then well, why'd you put a crosswalk in? You know, this type of thing. So we're, we're still trying to work through it.
Even no parking signs, even if you do no parking during the school day on Knollwood, does, do the kids mind the walk from Tanglewood? I don't know. And then we get the cars on Tanglewood and then they walk. I don't know. It's a tough, again, it's a tough.
Right. And then, you know, we, we've had a lot of, not just parking, but we've had a lot of people. And it's, I think it's, sometimes it's kids, it's sometimes the parents, the speed, you know, they're just speeding up to get the kids there on time and they're dropping them off in the back. And, you know, we've had enforcement giving tickets out to parents, giving the kids tickets out to kids. And the school, like I said, have been sending out announcements to try to get them to park. So we are working.
No, no, no. I fully understand, but I fully understand Mr. Parker's frustration and the people in that neighborhood's frustration, especially because it's kind of, you know, when you're building this thing, there is going to be an impact. I mean, this thing didn't like, this thing didn't land on a certain day and a certain night and create an impact. That impact was foreseeable, that impact should have been mitigated or at least addressed. And I think that's, I think I'm in favor of everything you're doing, but I think time is of the essence. The thing's there a year now, we should really get our hands around this to get a solution.
So Joey, you had mentioned the Tunxus Homes Carnival, so I had that in the report. And lastly, I'd like to introduce Chief Paul Malanson. He's our new Director of Public Safety. Maybe Paul, if you want to come up quickly and I just say that Paul has returned to the Town of Farmington as Director of Public Safety. In addition to being Police Chief, his responsibilities also include administrative oversight of the Fire Department as the Director of Fire and Rescue Services, as well as emergency management. Many of you know Chief Malanson. He was with the Town of Farmington for 13 years and he's most recently been Police Chief in Avon. So I think you know most of everyone, but if you don't, I just wanted you to come up and say hello and.
Yes. No, thank you. Glad to be back and it's been a busy couple days, but, you know, I spent 13 years here and been away for three years, almost to the day and back, so it really is a pleasure. A lot of familiar faces. Some of the same issues that we were dealing with five years ago are the same issues today because a lot of times they're not simple solutions. But really glad to be back and hit the ground running, been welcomed by everybody and just, yeah, look forward to working with everybody in the incoming days, months and years.
Thanks. We're glad to have you back.
Yeah. Welcome back.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Can I get a motion to accept the Town Mayor's, sir? So motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. L, do you have any appointments? You guys have any appointments, Dave?
No.
All right. M, old business, we have none. We'll move to N1.
N1, make a motion to schedule a special Town Council meeting on July 29th, 2025 at 7:00 p.m. in Town Council, Town Hall, Council Chambers.
Second.
Motion second. Keith.
All right. So the intent of this special Town Council meeting is to hold a public hearing for a new ordinance. Ultimately, we feel that we have not had enough time to review the information with our political parties. There are political ramifications to the changes that are presented. We received the information on the issue in question on our June agenda between busy summer schedules, getting in touch with people. Some people are home, some people are not home. We simply need more time to vet information and potential impacts. We, I'm speaking for the three of us who I've caucused with, are not necessarily opposed to this ordinance at all. And there is willingness to bring it back to Town Council if we wish to move forward. We know it's a tight timeline to get it in November, but right now I do feel like we need to go back and solicit more information from the political parties.
Go ahead, Dave, you want to say something? Well, I just think, I think, first of all, I think this was knocking around a few years ago. I think it's here now. I think it makes complete sense. I mean, I think we, you know, from, from our vantage point, it makes complete sense to try to be as efficient as possible with, with the people you need on an election day and then kind of taking the precinct at 2.5 and merging it with 1.3 at Westwoods, I think is, we, we think is just, is just a clear cut, you know, just smart move, you know? And they're adjacent to each other, you know, 1-3 can pick up this group out of 2-5. The people are voting right now at, you know, down at the police station, 2-5. Going over to Westwoods seems not to be, you know, an undue burden, you know, for anybody that votes in 2-5 to go over to Westwoods. So, you know, moving this forward, I think, is an important thing, but obviously it sounds like you need more time on your side to poll your people to see where they, they stand.
Yeah. I know Neil and I know everybody in the office has been working hard. I had a conversation with Neil today, was able to get me some information that we asked for. I just don't have the time. I tried to reach out to other people in the RTC who, you know, ask questions, to try to vet it out. Obviously, vacations are going on. I had no luck getting ahold of certain people that are out west, so I just can't vet the information to really make. Because obviously, I think it just affects everything in a different way, you know? It may move some people out where they're looking to run for certain positions, now they're going to be redistricted and now pushed out of that district area. Lines are going to be changed. I think just to give the political parties a time to really sit down, absorb it, have longer discussions. We are only able to meet once with Neil and Ann to have some discussions, have some questions. I think we just need more time to sort of vet out this information and look at all the different points of view. Again, I understand the ability to save money is crucial. I agree with that. But just to make a quick decision, because they've been running around for the last, you know, 30 days trying to get this on board. I know they're running around trying to get ahold of a lawyer, make sure how everything's supposed to flow. So I do appreciate the time, but I think, well, I do know, they're, they're asking to more information, more time to vet the information to make sure they're on the right pathway. Do you want to say something, Brian?
No, just wondering if this does get pushed back through or not? What does that do to getting the changes done in time for voting if we should make that change? What's the impact of putting off this particular vote at this time?
The impact, I think personally, is, the only thing right now is going to be just budget for the registered voters. I think they're just looking to try to consolidate and don't think it affects anybody really voting. I think it doesn't affect changes, it doesn't affect the timeline for people to go to normal polling places. So I think it just looks at the whole picture.
Joe, can I? I understand. I think also, you know, I know that when we first got this information, basically like the bat signal went out, can council meet at the end of July? And all of us were very willing to meet and to pull together the meeting. So I think it's the type of thing that, you know, I know, for example, from when Joe was talking about vacations, I was away.
talking about vacations, uh, I was away, uh, I was out of the country for about 10 days. At that point, our caucus, a small group of our caucus had a meeting about it. I didn't get any of that information, uh, until I got back, and then as we sort of had more conversations, more questions came up. So I think it's the type of thing where I know that our groups are getting together in the next couple of weeks to sort of set who they're intending to run for municipal elections. I think that's probably gonna be an appropriate time to start some of those conversations. And I think at that point, we can ask questions, and if we like, at the timetable, I think we can get something else going. I think we can, again, send out an email and try to put something out, something that, at that point, people are looking to pursue, right?
No, I, I'm not, uh, you know, trying to say, don't look at the information, I'm just wondering what the impact of putting the vote off.
I think we would have to have, I think we'd have to, this meeting that we, this meeting that I'm proposing that we do not have, uh, in July, I think would probably have to happen in, in August. I could be wrong, someone can correct me. And then at that point, it would then go to September. I think the idea of the timeline right now, what is gonna be July, to then push a vote to September, right? Public hearing, July, vote, September. So I think if something else was to happen, and it was to happen prior to September, it would have to be the type of thing where we get something together for August, vote in September. Um, and if I'm wrong, please correct me, I enjoy being corrected.
Yeah. Just be early September.
Yeah.
Yeah. You'd have the second, you'd have the timeline, you have to.
Because we have to have it 60 days before the vote. So it would probably be like the day after Labor Day.
So it's, so it would not, if, either way, it would still not affect the, uh, November 4th.
No, either way, we, we would be, so.
No, it doesn't affect, well, you have a blackout period that you need to have before the vote. And as long as you can, as long as you can get those other steps in for that.
The initial, the initial timeline was gonna be July, then we were gonna have to meet September 2nd, and then we were gonna meet again on September 9th for our regular meeting, right? Correct? Okay. So what this would do is potentially bump the July meeting to August, sometime in August, and then potentially have that, that second meeting on, on, uh, September 2nd.
Oh.
And then we would see each other again. We would get to know each other very well towards the end of August.
But it is for the 2027 election.
Right, yes. But you gotta have, we gotta, we, it's a referendum, so we gotta take care of it.
It would only be on the ballot for a municipal.
Right, correct, right.
I just want anybody confused, like, oh, we need to get it done, so it's gonna be this election.
Right, no.
Remind everybody to know it's for the 2027 election.
Perfect clarification.
Yeah, thanks.
Do you think you'll be able to meet your people? And granted, you're right, we're putting together our slates, we're, you know, so, so it seems like it's doable, right? It's doable to have those discussions.
Oh, yes, like I said, like, like Nina and I were talking today, and just, I just can't get ahold of people.
Mm-hmm.
You know, so, you know, even our registrars, God bless them, you know, two of them are on vacation themselves, and we got, you know, Neil and Mary here, so everybody's out and about everywhere, so everybody's traveling and doing things.
I, I, I understand the time change, and this is gonna sound, I'm not trying to sound snarky, I'm really, really tired, so please excuse, and, well, my comment. So I, I, I wanna, you know, technically, it's a point of order, because if you're making the motion, you should be supporting the motion. And as you guys set the agenda, I, I'm a little frustrated that it was on the agenda as a motion, and now you're.
You're absolutely right.
You're stating that it's not.
No, no, I, we, an apology for that, because I was hoping that we were able to get everything out. I was hoping, like I said, Neil can verify, I actually got, I got an email today with information, just can't get ahold of people.
As the, as, I, I will say, Patty, too, from my perspective, as the agenda come out, came out, you know, people that are, you know, within the political party are interested in what's going on in town politics, they see the agenda, they saw, some people in our caucus, it was the first time that they were made aware of this at all, and so phone calls start coming in, questions, concerns, things like that. So that's, you know, I think at the time of the agenda, I think that, maybe we saw it going the other way.
Okay. And then just for tonight, for future reference, don't make the motion if you're not.
Deal, I'm happy to, so do us.
I, I understand the timing considerations, and I think it is, and, the end of the day, it seems like a small change, but it's still an important issue.
Yeah, I agree. And I, you know. So, Joe, back to you, sorry.
No, no problem. So, the motion's on the floor to schedule a special town council meeting, all in favor for that? All opposed? Are you all in favor for? Or we have, we still have to make, we have the motion on the table, so. Yeah, so we have to vote on the motion.
And the motion's just, so let me clarify, the motion is just to.
No, the motion stands as, as it's written on the paper, to have it. So if you're in favor of having it, say yes. You're opposed, you'll say no.